Good evening, everyone. It is 6 o'clock PM Tuesday, May the 11th, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome the new city council and in particular those new members, newly elected members of the council and those re-elected members of the council. Welcome. I'd like to also welcome Mr. Joe Deacon and their listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Could you please call the roll? Present?
Present.
Councilmember here?
Here.
Councilmember here?
Here.
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 Present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to read COVID-19 public notice in accordance with the Illinois Phase IV reopening plan and the CDC recommending social distancing of at least six feet between persons and Governor J.B. Pritzker's Executive Order 20-07, as amended and extended, requiring the provision of video, audio, or telephonic access to meetings. Peoria City Hall is implementing changes and restrictions for the city council meeting on May 11th, 2021 while complying with the spirit of the Open Meetings Act. The meeting will be held in person in city council chambers. There is a room capacity restriction of 25 citizens and a wait would be required if met. Temperature screenings and face coverings are required for access to City Hall. Members of the public and media are invited to watch through the live stream on the City of Peoria's website, YouTube channel, local TV channel 22, or to listen through WCBU radio. While public comment is available in person, the option to submit comments through the city clerk's office due to room capacity restrictions was also available, and any submissions will be read into the record. The agenda, minutes, and video podcasts of the meeting will be available online through the city website. At this time, I'd like to ask you to join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection followed by the pledge of allegiance. We have, oh, Madam Clerk.
We have two proclamations.
Okay. I'd like to ask, the first proclamation is related to National Public Works Week. So I'd like to ask our Director of Public Works, Mr. Rick Powers, and our Superintendent of Operations and Assistant Director of Public Works, Mr. Cy Maroon, to join us at the podium. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Peoria, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Peoria to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association, be it now, now therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby proclaim May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions as they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. National Public Works Week in Peoria, Illinois is dated this 11th day of May 2021." Director Powers?
Mayor Ali, and I think that is your first proclamation, is it not?
It is, yes.
Oh, double thank you. And again, congratulations to you, congratulations to the new council seated, and it's an honor to be here, obviously. The proclamation, I believe, speaks to itself, and my colleagues behind me, they're one that you didn't recognize, is also our first woman city engineer, Andrea Klofenstein, who is standing. This last year, for all of us, we know with COVID and the budget, and the budget, and the budget, and then the budget, has been quite challenging for our department. And I was reading today, believe it or not, just preparing kind of for the proclamation, what I would say, and you know, I usually don't say much, and I probably won't tonight either, because we also have the Central Chapter APWA Chairman and Cy Maroon, who is also our Deputy Director of Operations, so is actually an APWA officer, so we are in good company this evening. So I'm going to try to get out of the way and not steal the lightning and just be a little thunder. But in the opening paragraph of APWA's site, when they talk about National Public Works Week, and the end of the first sentence, it just basically says that these professionals quietly go about doing these things. Note it says quietly. In other words, there's very little disruption. You don't hear us usually coming in storming the halls, doing or saying something shouldn't be done because we know budgets exist. We know these are challenging times. We know that infrastructure doesn't care about politics or budgets. We just simply have to do what we have to do. And I'm surrounded by some unbelievably professional people that do it well and have done it with less. The last time I did that, I was a Marine, and we called ourselves a few of the proud and did the same things. We got by with what we could, we adapted, we overcame. I'd like to think Peoria Public Works is doing that a lot lately. I mean, if you think about it, I kind of just made a list. We just had the orientation with a few new counselors here recently, and I had like five minutes to kind of go over a few things that we did, and I'll just give you a few lists of things that maybe you don't think about. Snow removal, potholes, pavement preservation, drainage, sewage, solid waste removal, debris removal, traffic signals, traffic lights, signs, culverts, fleet facilities, parking, infrastructure design, construction oversight, contract lettings, contract management, finance relative to the CIP, and operations, asset management, long-term control plan, you'll be talking about that tonight, I'm sure, at length, flood control, well, you'll be talking about that as well, traffic management, event management, and permitting. And that's not a complete list. That's just the things that you probably drive by daily and don't realize that's us. That's them, really. I just happen to be the guy lucky enough to sit in the office and call myself the director. I've always, I guess, looked at myself and said, surround yourself with brilliance and get out of the way. Teddy Roosevelt said that a long time ago, a lot more eloquently than I did, but it's never been truer than the people that I'm surrounded by now. So if I may, I will step aside and let Cy speak from the point of APWA, and we'll try to convince Andrea to speak, although she said engineers don't like to talk. So we'll see what we can do. So thank you very much, again, Madam Clerk, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Director.
Good evening, Mayor Ali, council and staff, and all those that are listening. I'm always ready and willing to take the microphone to talk about public works. It's what we do, and we're, as Director Powers said, we do it quietly. Simply, I'm just going to say thank you to Director Powers for his little speech there, because he actually said, and I'm glad he did because he covered more areas than I would have covered off the top of my head, he actually said all the things that we do. And we do those things, and we do, and honestly, we do a lot more than that that you just don't really hear much about. We work a lot with nonprofits, we do many other things quietly, we help, we're partners in the community, and we're just proud to be public works. You know, like I said, I'm always ready and willing, and to talk about who we are, what we are, what we do, and why we do it, obviously, we shared some of that already, and I don't need to do that. So it's simply an organization that, this is our 61st year, as the mayor read, and that's awesome in itself, to have National Public Works for 61 years. We go beyond that, obviously, but just that in itself says how committed we are to, you know, to what we do, and how continuously committed we are to what we do. So I just want to, you know, let you go with saying, you know, thank you for the support that you give us. We will continuously need that support to do what we do and to do it efficiently and be productive in what we do. We love what we do, we love taking part in the community, and just thank you guys tonight for the proclamation once again. It's always enjoyable to come down and get that for recognition of what we do with the public. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do under the radar and behind the scenes. Are we going to hear from our first woman engineer? Okay. Maybe later. Now I'm going to ask Mr. Joe Doolin, Assistant Community Development Director, to come forth. It is also Building Safety Month. Whereas the City of Peoria Building Safety Division of the Community Development Department recognizes the strength of our community depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, code enforcement inspections, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople's, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas safety in the built environment is an essential component of maintaining public health, making building safety more relevant now than ever. Building safety plays a major role in not only protecting the citizens of our community, but also protecting the property values of our city and reducing blight throughout our community. And whereas prevent, prepare, protect, building code save. The theme of Building Safety Month 2021 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of disaster preparedness, water safety, sustainability, resiliency, innovation, and training the next generation of building safety professionals in the construction industry. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May 21 Building Safety Month in Peoria, Illinois, dated this 11th day of May 2021."
Madam Mayor, thank you very much for the proclamation and welcome and welcome to the new council members. On behalf of Director Black, who couldn't be here tonight, we are very appreciative of the recognition of Building Safety Month. We wanted to bring forth this proclamation for two main reasons. A, to recognize the value and importance of building safety throughout the community. Building safety is an integral part of public safety in our community, whether that's keeping tenants safe in houses, whether that's keeping businesses safe and open. When you know you go into a building in the City of Peoria, you can be assured that a building inspector was there when it was being built, and all the standards and codes are being met. So we just wanted to bring attention to this issue and really recognize the value that building safety plays in our community. But in addition, we wanted to make sure that this is a good month to really bring recognition to the amazing work the community development staff does day in and day out, whether that's our code inspectors, our building inspectors, our administrative staff, our planners, our neighborhood and grant people. It really is about working hard for the public of the City of Peoria. I'm incredibly proud of the staff we have, the work they do every day, the love they have for the City of Peoria, and the service they provide to our residents. One of my proudest moments in the City of Peoria was back in 2019 when they received the National Award from the ICC Code Council for the Community Service Award. You know, there's a lot of different awards that can be awarded for being more efficient, being more productive, things like that, but the fact that they were honored with the Community Service Award really speaks to the character of all the employees we have. So thank you very much, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Doolin. Madam Clerk?
We are at the minutes.
Councilman Euler will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Chairwoman, I move to approve the minutes of special meeting of joint Peoria City Council and Town Board held on May 4th, 2021, as printed.
Thank you. Did, was your mic on? Is his mic on? Do you mind doing that again, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move to approve the minutes of the special meeting of the joint Peoria City Council and Town Board held on May 4th, 2021, as printed.
Thank you, Councilman. Can I get a second? Councilman Kelly, please. Thank you. Okay. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? If not, please cast your ballots. This is unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have a town item. 21-121 is a request from the town officials to approve the April 2021 actual expenditures and to approve the May expenditures for the town of the City of Peoria.
Can I get a motion to approve? Councilwoman Jensen, any second? Councilman Reganbach, sorry. Is there any discussion, please? Okay. I'm still working with the technology, bear with me. Okay. I think, are we open? It's open? Okay. Cast your ballots, please. Oh, discussion? Councilman Seer?
Mayor, I just said that a couple, two pages of the report, I just said there seemed to be a lot of duplicates number, and I was, I was going to ask a couple of questions. I don't know, is anybody's here from the township?
Okay, Mr. Manager? Who would direct that to?
This should be directed to the town supervisor, the town clerk, who can take it back to the, to the town board.
Just a question, just a lot of duplicate numbers on page one and two, and some are quite large, so I just had some question about that, if you could ask our new town supervisor, please.
You want to report back? Sure.
Please, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right, so the vote has already been taken. We have, oh, we don't have Councilman Allen showing. Okay, so unanimously approved? Thank you. I've got my sidekick here. Okay. Okay. Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
We are at the city agenda. On consent, 21-122 is a communication from the mayor and corporation council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency. 21-123 is a communication from the city manager and director of human resources with a request to authorize the city manager to renew existing liability coverages with Argonaut Insurance Company through Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services at a one-year cost of $306,135, and to add cyber liability coverage with Crum and Foster Insurance at a cost of $25,754, and crime coverage with Hanover Insurance at a cost of $2,685. 21-124 is a communication with a request to approve the low bid of Tazewell County Asphalt Company Incorporated in the amount of $120,852.95, and award a contract for warehouse parking lot resurfacing with an additional authorization of $6,042 for contingencies for a total contract award of $126,895.60. 21-125 is a communication to approve the sole source purchase of an automated security awareness program from No Before in the amount of $25,482. 21-126 is a communication with a request to approve and direct the city manager to execute an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation in the amount of $36,579 plus contingency for the city's participation in modernizing traffic signals at MacArthur Highway and Jefferson Avenue, and Illinois 29 and Spring Street, Illinois 8 and West Main Street, Southwest Adams Street and South Griswold Street, and Illinois 8, Illinois 116, and Southwest Adams Street. 21-127 is a communication with a request to approve the following, to approve a contract amendment authorization number one to the Glenn and Sheridan Road Culvert Project in the amount of $60,796 from the Storm Water Utility Fund balance for a total contract amount of $479,789. B, to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2021 revised annual budget relating to the Storm Water Utility Enterprise Fund to provide additional funding for the Glenn and Sheridan Road Culvert Project in the amount of $60,796.81, and recognize the receipt of the property owner's share in the amount of $45,443.35. 21-104 is a communication with a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code relating to signs, menu boards. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any items you want removed from the consent agenda? Councilman Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would ask to pull item 21-127.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Jensen?
21-124.
Any other items? Councilmember Seer?
Move to approve, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Seer has moved to approve the, okay, thank you, Paul, has moved to approve the consent agenda with the exception of those two items. Can I get a second, please? Councilman Kelly? Cast your votes, please. That's approved unanimously, thank you. Madam Clerk?
21-124 is a communication with a request to approve the low bid of Tazewell County Asphalt Company, Inc. in the amount of $120,852.95, and award a contract for warehouse parking lot resurfacing with an additional authorization of $6,042.65 for contingencies for a total contract award of $126,895.60.
This was Councilman Reganbach?
That was Jensen.
No. Councilwoman Jensen, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make a note for the record. It's my understanding from reading this city manager that the city only received one bid, and it was Tazewell County Asphalt Company. I'm assuming that's not located in the City of Peoria and it's located in Tazewell County, but that's the only bid that we received, correct? Okay. So without that, we don't really have any other choice to go anywhere else, right?
This is the only bid, this is the only, we need to move forward with this project. It's a requirement.
We need to move forward with this project. It's a requirement of a redevelopment agreement that we provide the developer at 812 Southwest Washington with 50 parking spaces. We have worked out a lease arrangement with the Downtown Development Corporation for the lot that is known as the Zion Coffee Lot, that's kind of catty corner from Zion Coffee, for some of the parking to be there, as well as the 815 Southwest Washington address, which is the city-owned lot that's across the street from 812. So we are required to provide those spaces before they open, they're getting very close to opening. Unfortunately, this is the only bidder that we had for this job.
And I guess as a follow-up, is it common just to have one bid? Usually we have more on these types of things, don't we?
I think that the nature of this asphalt work, it's small, it's a small job, it's not a very large job. I think that that's one of the reasons why we probably just had one bidder. We could certainly, I mean, Director Powers, is there anything else you would add from the bidding perspective or engineer? the, from the bidding perspective, or Engineer Klaufenstein?
I believe you nailed it, Mr. Manager, it's just that it's a small job and it's a very competitive market right now.
Okay, I just, thank you, I just wanted to make sure we put that out there, that we understand it's not a City of Peoria business, but it's the only bid that we got.
Yes.
So with that, I move to approve.
Councilmember Allen? Please cast your ballots. That passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-127 is a communication for the following, to approve a contract amendment authorization number one to the Glenn and Sheridan Road Culvert Project in the amount of $60,796.81 from the Stormwater Utility Fund balance for a total contract amount of $479,789.11, and B, to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2021 revised annual budget relating to the Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund to provide additional funding for the Glenn and Sheridan Road Culvert Project in the amount of $60,796.81, and recognize the receipt of the property owner's share in the amount of $45,443.35, and we'll need separate votes on these.
Councilman Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, at the request of the property owner, I would ask for a two-week deferral on this.
How many weeks?
Two weeks.
Two-week deferral, okay, can I get a second? Councilman Kelly? Please cast your ballots. That passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the regular agenda, 21-128 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city's estimated minimum local agency funding match of $1,083,0619, subject to the approval of Illinois Department of Transportation for the Rock Island Greenway Extension Project, Harvard Avenue to Park Avenue.
May I have a motion? Councilmember Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, if I may, I just want to acknowledge the work that's going into making this piece of the extension a reality, and it continues to show our commitment to the public space and to allow continued access towards the riverfront, so we're really excited to see this, and particularly with the, the bridge portion of it is gonna open up the trail and the, that's better, it will open up the trail and, and the riverfront to a whole new group of people, so I enthusiastically support this item.
Better to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Regenbach. Any others? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-129 is a communication from Councilman Tim Regenbach with a request for city council to approve a resolution calling on the state of Illinois to implement a utility shut-off moratorium.
Would move for the approval?
Moved by Councilman Regenbach, seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Any discussion? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, this was brought to our attention by Lawrence Marchard, and supported by the ACLU as well as many other organizations and throughout the state, actually, and what, what we're doing in a nutshell, and I'll ask Assistant Director Doolan to explain a little more of the details, is that the, the governor had put in place emergency orders, eviction moratorium, as well as the utility shut-off last year, the eviction moratorium has been allowed to continue while the utility shut-off has expired, so we know there's other funding coming down the pike, we know how this affects the families most affected and most vulnerable throughout the pandemic, so we're simply requesting the governor to reinstate the utility shut-off moratorium that had been previously in place, and if we may have Director Doolan and then privilege of the floor for Mr. Marchard.
Okay, any objection? Okay. Mr. Marchard, can you come to the floor? I want to make sure I hit the right mic, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I very much appreciate that, Councilman Regenbach and everyone else here, thank you very much for considering reinstatement of the moratorium. Of course, it looks like the pandemic is receding, but until that happens, we have a lot of people on the hook, a lot of people, the most vulnerable people among us who need help, they need continued assistance, we have money in the pipeline right now, there is about $80 million that are committed by the state for utility assistance, and that goes right to people who are receiving LEAP and other assistance right now, and so that's one thing, but that is only considered about 10% of the current need, and also we have monies coming down the, down the road through H.Bill 2877, if that is approved by the governor, it's been passed by the House and Illinois Senate, if that is passed by the governor, if he signs it, then $1.4 billion in federal monies will be allowed through, and it's federal money, it's money that was put in place by the Trump administration, and that and that monies will go to the immediate relief of people whose debt is piling up. Now, one of the people that I spoke to tonight, they're very concerned about if we have the moratoria, moratorium reinstated, isn't that going to just keep piling up debt on top of debt for the people who are least likely to afford it, and the moratorium that we're asking for is a stopgap measure, it doesn't have the vision that we need to deal with things down the road, but the monies that we have in the pipelines now, the $80 million of state money, and the $1.4 billion of federal monies that will come with the governor's signature, that's going to go directly to debt relief, that's going to go directly to the people who need it most, so that will relieve their debt burden, of course, that's not going to last forever, but we have to deal with things as we find them, and right now, we have these monies available, but until the governor signs that, these people now, the people who are least able to afford their utility bills are out there in the open, they can be turned off right now, and we need to protect them, we need to protect the people who are most vulnerable right now, because we understand that Peoria is a nationwide hotspot, it continues to be a hotspot for, for COVID cases, and we know that people right here in this room have been affected directly by it, and we can just, you know, just keep in mind, or we can think to ourselves, if we didn't have the money, if we didn't have the, the resources, if we didn't have the family or support, you know, the, the electricity's going to go off, the water's going to go off, the gas is going to go off, and if that happens, it makes your living space uninhabitable, you're either going to go on the street, or you're going to go and double up and triple up with your friends and family, and anyone can understand how that's going to make the pandemic so much worse, in a place that's been a nationwide hotspot, so the moratorium, if we can get, if we can urge the governor to sign the moratorium again, it's not going to cover everything, but it will help us right now, and it will save lives, and it will reduce, it will reduce the pandemic spread, and that's what I believe that we need right now on a statewide basis. Peoria is a very important city in our state, and it will go a long ways toward, I think, urging Governor Pritzker to reinstate the moratorium that's very much needed by the people.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Marchard, for your leadership in this, and I understand there's other cities within Illinois that have put forth similar resolutions to the governor, so thank you for that, and Councilman Regenbach, back to you.
Thank you very much, Director Doolan, would you just kind of share a little bit of the background as to the funding that is coming down the pike and where, where we are right now?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Councilman Regenbach, I, I do, you know, want to talk a little bit about the work that the Community Development Department has done over the last few months in regards to the utility, utility moratorium and the eviction moratorium, about two and a half months ago, the, the city, in partnership with the Heart of Illinois Continuum of Care, Home for All Continuum of Care, PCCO, Salvation Army, 2-on-1, the Health Department, Prairie State Legal Services, Catholic Charities, and some additional nonprofit organizations of Peoria, started meeting on a weekly basis, knowing that these issues were coming to our community and coming to our community fast, if the utility, utility moratorium is lifted and the eviction moratorium is lifted, so we've been working really hard in partnership with those organizations to ensure that we have all the latest resources that are available within our community, so with that, I wanted to just bring some attention to some specific ones that are available, the best way for residents right now to learn about different programs that are available is to call the United Way and AMT 2-on-1 service, they've been one of our, attending every meeting, every Wednesday with us, they have the list of all of the different programs that are available in the city, whether it's for utility assistance or rental assistance. The, the UDAP program that Lawrence mentioned, Mr. Marchard mentioned, is a fantastic program, and you should contact PCCO if you are at 200% or below the area poverty line, they can help you with direct access to funding for Ameren gas and electric bills, if you've already been on LIHEP in the last three years, you don't need to do anything, it will automatically apply to your account. The other thing that's really important for everyone to realize, and, and I want to thank our landlord community, Mr. Centers, who's been working very closely with the city to get as much information out there to the landlord and tenant community as possible, and Prairie State Legal Services for working on the tenant piece of it, on May 17th, Ida will be launching the Rental Assistance Program, it's $25,000 is available for tenants who've been affected through COVID and have unpaid rental bills, the landlords have to start the program and start the application process, more information can be go if you go to Ida's website, in addition, the city will try to get some information on that program on our website too tomorrow, that'll cover 12 months past rent and three future months, this is direct help that can help residents, on a webinar last week, Ida thought that the $500 million they have for counties less than 200,000 people in the state of Illinois, they should be able to help almost everyone that applies, but the important thing is for people to understand that, that they need to apply, they need to get the money, and, and that's how they can help with those bills. The unfortunate piece that, that is, is somewhat lacking in the utility world right now is the water piece, the federal government does have some proposed legislation to create programs similar to LIHEP from the water side, however, they have not released that guidance or that funding yet, so that funding isn't available, there are still some programs run by Salvation Army and a couple other organizations within our community that will help with water utility assistance, so the best resource to call is 2-on-1 for that information, and the city will continue to put out that information, and just kind of want to end, really make sure to reemphasize the thanking our community partners, the Heart of Illinois Continuum of Care, PCCO, the Salvation Army, Prairie State Legal Services, the Health Department, just everyone who's, who's really come to the table to try to get as many resources out to our residents as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Doolan, this information is essential that we get it out to the public, so. You're off, okay, thank you. Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm very troubled by this, not so much about the compassion that such a proposal would demonstrate, but I, I look at it a little bit like student loan program, while you're a student in the student loan program, everything looks wonderful, and when you finally get out of school, the burden is tremendous, and, and we have a lot of programs now to, to help these folks, we have, we are coming to the end of our pandemic, there are help-wanted signs all over town, to encourage people, to encourage the general public to take on more and more and more debt, I think, I, I have, I have a problem with it, I, I think I get it. These are the people, as Mr. Marchard said, these are the people who are the most vulnerable, they have the least number of options out there, but, but things are moving forward, and I, and I feel that a greater amount of debt for them today is not the answer. I'm going to be, be very reluctantly voting against this because I don't, because I, I, I like the programs we have to help these people, but instead of getting help or encouraging them not to, and just pile on more debt that they cannot, they, they probably cannot serve us, I, I just don't think this is the way to go, so thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I wanted to, I had a couple of questions regarding the moratorium, is there a timeframe of how long this would, a particular moratorium would last, do we have an idea, 90 days, 120 days, just to have an idea, or is it just more so writing in support of this to the governor, and then Governor Pritzker would set the terms of that moratorium?
Mr. Marchard, can you come up to the podium?
Yes, I can answer that, if you can, I don't know if the resolution is right in front of you, but on section four, it says it will go, the moratorium, if it is reinstated, would go until at least herd immunity is reached and appropriated, the federal funds are appropriated, so we are in no way, you know, reaching that, and if you, I think if you give it a, a number, 30 days, 90 days, even six months, you know, it's just, it's going to, it's not going to work, just as we see that they took the moratorium off in April 1st, and of course, it's not over, so we've put in the wording right here, until at least herd immunity and appropriated federal funds go out. Thank you. I have sensitivity and awareness of what Mr. Kelly has talked. I have sensitivity and awareness of what Mr. Kelly is talking about, that debt potentially could be piled on. But the numbers that have been mentioned already go a long way toward alleviating that debt. You know, if the governor is going to sign the bill 2877, that's going to release $1.4 billion of monies that were appropriated under the Trump administration. Now, under our new administration, we have a lot more receptivity to providing monies and a lot more monies toward actions like, you know, utility shut offs. So I think that there's a very good chance that the Biden administration is going to provide us with a significant amount of money that will relieve whatever debt people may have to take on with a moratorium.
Thank you, Mr. Mashard. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Madam Mayor, excuse me, I'm so sorry. Director Doolin, are you still there? Could you just clarify, I think there might be a misunderstanding here that this is grant money, this is not money that the homeowner would need to repay, correct?
Councilman Regenbach, that is correct, that all of the funds that are currently available and will become available are grant funds that specifically are meant for past debt and past bills. Most of the programs are for utility past payments and most of the programs in place, you have to show that you were affected by the pandemic as well.
So specifically, this is helping address those who have been able to afford themselves the advantage of having the moratorium in place because of the inability to pay for the last 12 months, I think I heard you say earlier. So this is not going to be, was it past 12 months and three months into the future, something to that effect?
That's the Ida Rental Assistance Program. The LIHEP program reduces past due amounts up to $5,000. The City of Peoria program that actually closes this Friday, that goes up to 80% of area median income for all utilities, including Ameren gas and water, pays for six months past due rent because that's the HUD guidelines. So it just really depends on what program that people qualify for and what programs they are able to sign up for. And that's really why I just keep driving home that the best way to get that information and navigate all of those programs is to call 2-on-1 as they have all that information and can connect you to the right resources.
Call 211. That's, we oftentimes hear it's hard to know who to contact. Well, it's very simple, very clear in this case. If you need utility assistance, call 211. There is help available now and there will be more coming. And we would respectfully ask the governor to keep the moratorium or reinstate the moratorium until those additional funds are in place. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to be clear, this resolution does not link a moratorium with funds that are out there or that are proposed to be out there. This resolution stands alone as a moratorium, period. Okay? The rest, I agree, let's have people call 211 for help. That's, you know, if, but if they're not paying their utility bill, there's no reason to ask 211 to help them with their utility bill. So there is not a connection in this resolution between those two things. And I am worried about things not being, the public sector never ever covers everything. And I think that that's not going to be covered is going to be very, very harmful to these folks. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I think of those who are having trouble paying their utilities right now, you know, where we are right now in our society is we are worrying about maintaining our basic needs and maintaining your utilities is a basic need. And so if it came down to me thinking about my FICO score or me keeping on air conditioner for my kids this summer, you know, water, electricity, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna worry about that. So I think that's something that we got to keep in mind, that we are in some strange times right now. And I do understand where you're coming from, Councilman, but I think we have to realize right now, people are just trying to maintain the basic needs right now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmembers, Rick Regal?
Thank you, Mayor Ali. Tonight, we have a declar, we have a request to go in front of the governor to be able to continue a moratorium. If we had a pandemic playbook in the very beginning of this, I think we could have probably aligned things very much better along the lines on the front part of this. We had great people step up and great organizations. We had school districts that stepped up to make for sure that we had connectivity. But one of the things that lagged behind was the ability, and we put moratoriums on housing, we put moratoriums on utilities, was how we make that transition back to what we would consider the norm. And this is one of those things that got forgotten. It really did. And the importance of having utilities, we can talk about, and it goes into each home a little bit differently. For the child that doesn't have electricity, it doesn't matter about connectivity because they, you have nothing to plug into. What the request is here is for us as a city to stand up for what's important, which is to say that during this transition back to the norm, whether that takes 30 days, 90 days, or takes a little bit longer, that we look at what we can do to help our residents be able to come out of this as well as our businesses have towards the end. There isn't a perfect solution to it, but if I'm going to err, it's going to be erring in the right of compassion to be able to make for sure that we have and do the right things. This is a request to the governor. There are funds out there. We know it's going to take time to be able to communicate to all of our citizens and we're going to ask not only the help of those here on council and our communication for ability, but our citizens to make for sure that each and every person know about the funds that are out there. In talking with some of those that are running some of the different utility programs on payments, they've got some funds. What they need to do is have the people call in and be able to request it. Again, 2-on-1 is the best place because it's filtering all of those informations so they can, they can put you in touch with the best programs or a variety of programs. This is being able to make for sure, and let's talk, let's talk about it in a business term, cash flow. Because a home cash flow, all of a sudden, you've got to pay those things that you can and utility bills get expensive. So it's going to take a lot of, a lot of funds to be able to pay those back bills. To be able to buy the time, to be able to get the right programs in place is what we're asking for here. And I fully support making for sure that this resolution passes tonight.
Any other comments? Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Please cast your ballots. That motion passes with nine yeses and one no. Okay, Madam Clerk?
21-110 is a communication from the city manager and the community development director with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to the establishment of the City of Peoria Land Bank. And there is a handout on your desk of a revised ordinance.
That revision is in yellow. Councilmember Rick Regal?
Thank you, Mayor Ali. I would make a motion to approve item, I mean, for sure I've got the right number here,
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any discussion? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to say that I was glad to finally hear about the city moving forward on the proposal for the land bank. I heard about it quite a few years ago when I attended a Regional Neighborhood Association meeting and I was impressed with it. But I would be remiss if I would not mention some of the concerns that were brought up at a meeting just last week about the land bank, namely, the ability for residents who would be most impacted by this to have input. Some of the people attending were concerned about, at least on the initial surface of this, looking just like another city operated project without a lot of input and autonomy by the folks mostly impacted by it. And I have to say, as a representative of the First District, we probably have the largest number of vacant properties and old structures. So there has to be some guarantee that folks impacted by it will have some say so at the table as to how their concerns, voices are met with regards to the land bank. But I am in favor of it, but we have to make sure that it is not just another land bank. They can be very successful if the folks impacted by them are heard and at the table and have input. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. And, you know, I think we're going to hear from Mr. Doolin after we get some more discussion in. There was a meeting held, I believe, last Thursday at the Gateway Building to get public input. And I think based upon some of that feedback, some additional revisions were made that you'll find in the yellow draft. So we'll have him speak to some of that. In the meantime, I'm going to call on Councilmember Jensen, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also am an enthusiastic supporter of this program and have been asking the city to explore such a program for a number of years. So I'm excited to see it happen. I also was in attendance at the public meeting that Councilwoman Jackson was at, and I thanked the staff and Mr. Doolin for setting that meeting up quickly. And I guess there were a number of concerns that were brought up. I know that some of those concerns, Mr. Doolin has addressed with this new proposal. So I'll wait till he talks about that, but I know he's added that there'll be two resident, residents from neighborhoods that are impacted by the land pack, by the land bank will be represented. And during that meeting, he indicated that this is just the initial step to approve the program so that we can get the funding from the Attorney General's office, because there's a deadline for us to do that. Once the program is approved and the land bank manager is put in place, it's my understanding then that there, and the board is appointed, that there will be public meetings and other opportunities for meaningful public input from the stakeholders and the residents to, I guess, create the program and the strategy that the land bank board and the land bank chairman will be using and the staff to start implementing the program. So I guess I just want to reiterate, this is just a start to get the program going. And then I will also be advocating that we continue to get input from residents and stakeholders that are going to be impacted by this to make sure that they're part of whatever the plan is that we, as a city, approve and use going forward. So with that, I guess, I don't know if, at this point, Mr. Doolin, if I could ask you a couple of questions?
Councilman Jensen, I am here.
Okay. Can you talk about just quickly the changes that you made based on that input that was provided at the meeting?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. So at the last council meeting, after the discussions that was had on council floor, it was requested that we hold some public input to get input specifically related to the creation of the land bank board. We held a public meeting last Thursday at the Gateway Building. We sent it out on Nextdoor and social media. We issued a press release and got the Journal Star and WUK both picked up that story. In addition, we emailed it to all the neighborhood association leaders, asking if they had any questions on the proposal and inviting them to the meeting. We hosted the meeting last Thursday. Attendance wasn't great, but it was a very passionate discussion about some issues that residents had about the proposal. A lot of the concerns dealt with transparency of the process, along with making sure that the neighborhood interests were represented within the land bank board and future decisions that the land bank board might make. Because of that, the yellow sheet that you have in front of you does have a little change from what was in the council agenda, based on the feedback directly from that meeting and the preference of the mayor to make sure we incorporate some of that input into the decision-making process. We changed the, I'll call your attention to Section 5-554. Section A was changed from three city-at-large council members to three council members. So it could be from anyone, not just at-large representation. In addition, we added an additional representative from neighborhoods. We thought it was important to, one of the concerns was they didn't want two neighborhood interests from one specific council district, specifically if that was a district that didn't have a lot of vacant abandoned properties. The other, the other thing we wanted to ensure is that the person with the real estate interest was, lived in the city of Peoria and the representative that was appointed by the county of board lived in the city of Peoria. So the decisions that would be made would be specifically related to people who are living in the city of Peoria. And in regards to the feedback on transparency, I believe this process in the land bank board is actually an incredibly more transparent process than we currently have in place at the city of Peoria. Right now, some of the transactions that the land bank can and can't do are done and allowed by statute and council approval and policy by city staff. What this process does is it actually has a board that will get monthly reports specifically on this. All of the monthly board meetings will be open to the public. They will have to adhere to the Open Meetings Act. In addition, FOIA and everything will apply specifically to those meetings. The other thing I also want to mention is, kind of to add to what Councilwoman Jensen said, setting this land bank board and manager up is the first step in really focusing our attention more on vacant abandoned property throughout the city of Peoria. The council currently has a vacant management, vacant property management strategy and policy that hasn't been updated in nine or 10 years. It is what our department currently uses with the staffing that we have to do this, but it does need updated to reflect the current times we're in. Once that land manager and land bank board are in place, our hope would be to have them meet, have public input, really engage the public in those discussions, figure out what the best strategy for each part of town is, and then create that policy and plan from that. We would, of course, bring that policy change and plan back to the council as a whole to vote on, to ensure that it had the blessing of the entire council to meet those goals. The other additional public meeting we had is I met with Peoria Area Association of Realtors last Thursday, their governing board, to talk about the land bank. For the most part, they are very supportive. They did have two kind of concerns. One was that the way the ordinance was originally written, it said someone with real estate interest. It was very important for them to, at the minimum, that person have a real estate license in the city of, in the state of Illinois. They had a preference that it was a member of PAR. Staff, after talking, felt it was more appropriate to make sure they have a real estate license in the city of Peoria. And then if it's a council decision or the mayor's decision, when you appoint someone a member of PAR, that would be at her discretion. The other thing that we're still looking into, that I feel like if it is an issue we can bring back for an ordinance change at any point in the future specifically related to it, had to do with listing. Kristi Ingerman with PAR did a really good job and sent me a section in the Cook County Land Bank statute about listings. Essentially, they just want to assure, assure if the city land bank bought property, that it wouldn't squeeze out a real estate agent who had a listing. That absolutely won't happen. We'd have to honor any contracts if the city land bank did purchase property. Traditionally, and very, very rarely, do city land banks actually purchase property. If the property is listed for sale, the market hopefully is working. Really where a land bank steps in is when the private part, private market isn't working and that's where they have to get involved. So those are kind of some of the concerns that came up at the meeting that we did feel could get addressed through the changes made. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have, Councilwoman Jensen. questions you might have, Councilwoman Jensen.
I noticed, sorry, I don't think my microphone's on. Is it?
It's on.
Okay. I noticed that, I think it's my understanding that this proposal will be that the person from the real estate community will be a licensed realtor. Is that right?
Yes.
Because it doesn't reflect that in the language of the ordinance, so I think, I mean, with our vote, oh, it does?
It's in the paragraph under the letters.
Okay, I was looking at 5-554E.
Yeah, if you, after H, there's a paragraph.
Oh, I got it, okay. I see that now. I see, okay. Thank you. So thank you for working on this so diligently, Mr. Doolin, and I know we had a quick turnaround for all the changes, so I appreciate it, and I know the neighborhood residents that were at the meeting appreciate it too, so thank you.
Thank you for being at the meeting, Councilwoman Jensen, and providing additional feedback. And I have two more lights on, but I wanted to ask Mr. Doolin, while you've gotten warmed up, if you could, if you were asked just by the general public to describe what a land bank is and how would it benefit Peoria in a quick summary elevator speech, what would you say?
So that's actually a really hard answer to give because it's, land banks are so different throughout the United States, essentially based on the states that they're in. I think to give a quick, a land bank is a strategy and tool a city can use to address vacant abandoned property, to clear title from properties, to ensure that vacant abandoned property is handled more accordingly. It's a tool a community can use to address blight in neighborhoods. So your second part of your question, specifically what does the city of Peoria land bank do and what benefits it will have to the community, I think the main benefit that it'll have in the community is really focusing additional attention on vacant abandoned property in the city of Peoria. A specific board and person, an additional employee in the legal department and one of our community service inspectors will devoting a significant amount of time only related to the vacant abandoned issues in our community. The board in place brings together a unique group of people with multiple interests in really taking vacant abandoned property and repurposing it into a positive good in our community. So I think those are the main things that Peoria can see. You know, a lot of the successful land banks throughout the country, whether that's in Ohio or Michigan, have been established for 15, 20 years. You're not going to see overnight success in Peoria on a large scale with any land bank. It really is the groundwork to establish a strategy for how we're going to deal with these properties, some policies and tools to put in place for us to do. And then the other thing that's really going to make this more successful is additional funding in the future, and the land manager can work to look at those grant opportunities. He can look to different, the private market and see if we can work with other foundations to get grants, and really try to get more investment in our neighborhoods through this kind of focused strategy.
Thank you. I think you answered that quite well, Mr. Doolin. Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is my evening to be contrary, I suppose. But Director Doolin, we used to have a land manager in your department, did we not?
Yes, sir.
And we used to have an administrative person in the legal department that prepared legal documentation to go to court with to accelerate the acquisition of abandoned property. Is that also correct?
Yes, we had many additional staff in legal than we do now who could focus on that work.
And I think in our meeting that we had together, and I don't want to misquote you, but back then, the total cost of those two positions was about $165,000, if my memory It seems to me that this proposal is, let me just read the purpose here. It says, "The city will use authority for the common public purpose of combating community deterioration. Specifically, the city will focus on strategies to return property to productive use, improve quality of life, stabilize the tax base, create opportunities for public and private investment," et cetera, et cetera. It's not as if we don't do that now, or don't try to do that now. We have a not a very good economic situation in a lot of these neighborhoods, and I think that's what we should address, and a land bank with another big bureaucracy isn't going to change much of anything. We're going to, you know, the, I mean, I'm not against what this is supposed to be doing, but we can already do it. But if we want to get the state money in here, we have to create a big new bureaucracy to do what we can already do. If we want to move, we cut the budget in that department, and that's how those departments, and that's how those positions got eliminated. It seems to me that in our budget discussions, we can replace that money if this is a priority, and I think it's a worthwhile priority. We can do it ourselves. One of the models that we use, or in the discussions with Director Black and Mr. Doolin, was Rockford. Rockford has become the trustee, not only has a land bank, but is the trustee of all these properties, which I think would be advantageous as well. They did it without the state. We can do it without the state. I'm always a little suspicious of the state because, in my estimation, the state doesn't see any hope for our neighborhoods, and I think, and personally, I have great hope for our neighborhoods if we do some things right. So to me, this is just a show that we care, but we're not going to be doing anything more than we could already do today without the big bureaucracy. So with that in mind, I will be voting no on this proposal. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Mr. Doolin, I remember one of the questions that came up last week was some of the challenges the city faces in trying to determine ownership of properties. And I remember you sharing with us that the average wait is at least two years before a property is cleared for demolition, but we have seen that in some cases, when they're out-of-state property owners, a lot of times, properties can be tied up much longer than that. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but can you talk a little bit about the benefits, the screening process, and whether or not you had an opportunity to find out if the land bank would cut down on that average wait time before a property is cleared for demolition or takeover by the city?
Yes, ma'am. So the two years is actually the quickest a property can be actually declared abandoned. So that is put in place by state statute, the abandonment statute, which essentially says that if your property has two years unpaid back taxes, unpaid water bills, is vacant and abandoned, and is a dangerous building, it can be, the city can petition the court to declare it abandoned. Unfortunately, the city really, right now, is not in a position to have the staffing to be able to do that to properties. We're at a very reactive point with no one specifically focused on looking at those properties and trying to find them as soon as they become to the point where they qualify for that criteria. We really stumble across them on a complaint basis when someone calls and says this property's been vacant for four or five years, and that's why that process is even longer than the two years. What this money and these positions can do is really create a data-based approach to identify abandoned buildings as soon as they meet that criteria. A vacant abandoned building that sits for two years unfortunately might need demolished, but there's a lot better chance it wouldn't need demolished than if we waited for three, four, five, six years to obtain the title to the property. In addition, going through that process and having the staff time to be able to devote to that, not only can we go through that process, we can get a clear title to the property. There are other options available for us to get property if we had the additional staff. We could look to foreclose on liens that we have on properties. Unfortunately, when that happens, you don't get a clear title to a property. So really, you know, those are the different things that we can, hopefully the land bank and the land manager can explore within the state statute, working with the legal department to maximize all of the tools we have available. Unfortunately, right now, with our demolition program in the city of Peoria, we don't want to have to demolish properties, but by the time we have the time to get the court to give us an order to demolish the structure or give us that deed to that property, it's past the point of return, and we have to demolish it. Hopefully, with this process in place, the long-term goal over the next four or five years is to really prevent those properties from having to be demolished. A vacant lot in the city of Peoria creates a lot less property tax revenue than a property that's occupied with a structure.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Assistant Director Doolin, for your hard work on this. In a meeting with me, I wasn't able to attend the town hall at the Gateway Building, but I am very impressed with this pilot program. I think it's an opportunity for us to add staffing in areas to address issues of blight and abandoning homes and lots. As mentioned earlier, we've lost these positions because of budget cuts in the past, and so we've had the opportunity to add these positions back to our staffing. If it's only a temporary, throughout the time of the funding that we have, we're really not losing anything. If we have this staff until, I believe, Joe, talking to you, September or early fall of 2022, if it doesn't work, then we go back to what we've been doing today. And so I'm excited to see what we can do with this. I think it brings some intentionality and some focus to addressing blight in our underserved communities, and I will be in support of it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to quickly respond. We're not voting here to set up a big bureaucracy. All we're doing is setting up a land bank program that will add one new staff person full-time and then two part-time staff people. That's not a big bureaucracy. And we will be able to do things that we can't currently do, and once it's in place, hopefully in the future, we can do a lot more things. So I'm very supportive, and I'm looking forward to seeing this program go.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. We have a motion. Who made the motion? Madam Clerk?
It was Councilmember Ruckregel.
Right, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Okay, please cast your ballots. Motion passes, nine yays and one no. Councilmember Kelly?
Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. 21-039 is a communication from the city manager and director of Public Works with a request for the following: A, to adopt an ordinance establishing the Peoria Combined Sewer Overflow Remediation District, and B, approve a resolution setting fees effective on May 1, 2023, with planned annual increases through May 1, 2026, for the Peoria Combined Sewer Remediation District, and amending Resolution 20-088B and 19-379B, setting fees for the Peoria Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation District, setting fees effective on May 1, 2023, with planned annual increases through May 1, 2026, for city sewer rehabilitation rate. And we will need separate votes.
Can I get a motion on the floor? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This model has been working on for a while. I just don't like it at all, and for many, many reasons. A lot of the questions, my questions, have been going unanswered. I look at the numbers since our past public director, Mr. Reese, came in front of us that were here four years ago, talked about having a backlog of about $17 million. And over the last four years, we have raised over $30 million from the stormwater utility fee. And there's just a lot of question in my mind, where the money is gone. I know the COVID-19 really hurt everybody and our staff, and we're not able to be as busy as they should. But you look at the backlog, and 2020 is now over $21 million. And when I look at the money that we will be collecting the next 39 years, I won't be here to see it all, I'll be way gone. But we have five tranches that our manager, Mr. Manager, is in his model. We have five tranches of $15 million, the first one, $16 million, the second one, $16 million, the third one, $21 million, I believe, the third, the fourth one, and $41 million for the last one. And that's $109 million. In the four years I've been here, I've listened to a lot of my colleagues complaining about, example, the garbage contract, which was our largest contract. But here, we're talking about $109 million, and that's just capital investment, with over probably $50 million in operation investment to put this thing together. And I know that we'll collect the next 18 years, and then you've got to remember, this is a 39-year project, and that's to be done over the next 18 years, but we'll pay for it in 39 years. We will be collecting, if my numbers are accurate there, and we're collecting $12 million plus inflation in the next 18 years, we'll be collecting over $245 million for our $109 million project. So I do have a lot of questions. City Manager Nana, he knows I'm not happy about this, but I have to ask tonight for deferral for two weeks until the next meeting in May, so we can have more discussion about all this money here and how big this contract is. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second? Councilmember Kelly seconds the motion to defer. Clear the tally here. Councilmember Jensen?
I just, I guess, I'm a little surprised to ask for a motion to defer. This is something we've been talking about for, since I've been on the council since 2013. So if you, city manager, could just give a brief overview? I mean, we voted to approve the CSO a couple months ago, but this is after extensive discussions and negotiations with the EPA for years, so it's nothing that should be a surprise to anyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman and Madam Mayor. That's absolutely correct. We have discussed this funding model for funding our CSO obligations for a number of years, and what we have stated, that the administration has recommended that we utilize sewer funds for capital construction of the CSO improvements that we need to make, the $109 million of CSO improvements that we need to make, and then utilize the stormwater utility to fund the operating and maintenance expenses of this. And that's what's laid out in this council communication. What you have in front of you at the very back of this packet is that proposed spending plan, where we look at taking the current lateral and rehab rates that we have, adding in a new fee, which is called the CSO fee, so that we can be transparent about where the dollars are going, so that the public can see that this is what's paying for the CSO expenses that we have. And then you would use that to make the payments on the bonds that we would be using. That's out of our sewer fund. Over time, as those improvements are made, we're going to have Over time, as those improvements are made, we're going to have obligations that we're going to have to do to maintain the green stormwater infrastructure. I hear from council members all the time about, we need to be maintaining our roadways and our infrastructure that we have. This is how we'll pay for that. That comes out of the Stormwater Utility Fund, which is a separate fund. That is, if you look at the landscape sheet that was laid out in the packet, that's in a separate line that talks about how we're going to manage those expenses over time. Councilman Seer is absolutely correct. We have collected a lot of money in the Stormwater Utility Fund in order to tackle the backlog of stormwater projects. The CSO expenses that the council unanimously approved that we start to incur is only focused in an eight-square-mile area of the oldest part of the city. The twenty-one, the seven-hundred-and-forty-eight projects that are backlogged to the tune of twenty-one million dollars are in the forty-two square miles outside of that eight-square-mile area. That's what needs to be taken, and we need to start to work on those. We haven't, because over the last year, we shut everything down because of COVID. We stopped spending money in order to be able to hunker down and make sure that we're working on that. The public works staff that was here tonight is working on scheduling those projects so that we can start to chip away at those. But the clock is also ticking. We have to apply for a grant, or for a loan, excuse me, through the Illinois EPA, a low-interest loan that is cheaper than if we were to go out on the street and borrow money from a bond house, if we went out and sold bonds and issued bonds. That would be four percent interest or three-and-a-half percent interest. The loans are going to come in at one-and-a-half percent interest. So in order for us to do that, next week, if council passes this tonight, next week, what would happen is that we would come back to you with the loan agreements and the contracts that we would need to have in place in order to actually now go out and apply finally, and put in our final loan application in front of the Illinois EPA, which is what we've talked about, we've had a public hearing about that, so this is what we've been moving forward. This item has been deferred for two months, and we haven't had any discussion about it. But we need to go forward with this. This is an obligation that we said to the federal government, we are going to commit to making these payments and these milestones. We have to go forward with this, and it doesn't just come out of anywhere. We have to pay our bills. This is the way that we have to go forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Councilmember Grab?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. In 1972, under President Nixon, the Clean Water Act was passed over as veto in both the House and the Senate. And the purpose of that Clean Water Act was to clean up surface waters such as our own Illinois River, designed to make a nicer environment for all, for people swimming in our rivers and our lakes, our surface waters, such as the Illinois River, which is such a huge amenity for the city of Peoria. Not too many cities are by a river, and it adds so much to our quality of life in terms of our ability to recreate ourselves along the river and to enjoy the outdoors. And so this council and previous councils have struggled mightily with the very sclerotic agency called the EPA to come to an affordable, for the people of Peoria, solution, a resolution of the pollution issues affecting the Illinois River. And this has been going on since the mid-eighties. Finally, the consent decree was entered into in December of 2020. What we have here is really a plan that costs about half as much as what the EPA originally wanted to impose on us. Originally, we were talking close to a quarter of a billion dollars in remediation work. And the arguments that were given was, hey, your people, based on their median income in Peoria, can afford a quarter of a billion-dollar cleanup. The council stuck to its guns, felt that it was unaffordable, and we negotiated what we have now, which is about a hundred and nine-million-dollar remediation program, spanning some eighteen years. You will be around in eighteen years, Councilman Seer, I guarantee you. And what it's going to do, I believe, is create head-of-household union jobs as we clean up that river and rebuild a lot of our shabby infrastructure. It's an investment that I think we're compelled to make in terms of the Clean Water Act, and I believe that the resolution that the council came to with the consent decree was a good one, because instead of using foreign contractors down by the river to build a forty-foot in diameter trench to remediate this runoff into the river, this filthy runoff, we wrestled the EPA to the ground, and we insisted that their sclerotic bureaucracy allow us to do, of all things, a green model. A green model, which allows us to use local union labor and to repair infrastructure that's already bad, using rain gardens, bias wells, permeable surfaces. So it ain't all bad, Councilman Seer. You will be alive to see the end of this. And I would just throw those thoughts in. Of course, I always respect one of my fellow councilmen's desire to get more information on it, and I pledged to Councilor Seer that I would support a deferral, but I think the manager is correct in what he has described, and I don't think we're going to do much better than this. But you know what? I'm from Missouri. If I can be convinced of that, or you need to be convinced of that, I'll support a deferral, as long as it's not time-sensitive. I mean, it is time-sensitive. It's only been around since the eighties, but is it?
Council, Councilman Grab, I need to get a clarification on the rule regarding discussion on a deferral. Council Peterson, can you speak to that, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. According to Council Rule 37, a motion to defer to a specific date is generally limited. The debate on that is generally limited to any effect of the postponement unless council is then asking staff for additional information to then bring back at that later date.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. So I see additional, oh. Mr. Manager, your light was on.
I...
Okay, all right, thank you. And I see additional lights on, and so I'm assuming that your lights pertain to the legal counsel. Okay, Councilman Reganbott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, Mr. Manager, as far as the timing and the impact of a deferral, you comment in here and you reference the 1.4% interest rate on one of the loans that we're applying for. What would the impact of a deferral have on applying for that extremely low, historic-low
As I previously stated, I think that we have to come back at some point, if council approves the fee structure, we have to prove up as part of our loan application with the IEP A that we have a funding source to pay the loan back. We have not been able to submit a final loan application, because this has been pending for two months. So what we need is to come back to them. So we, this, the longer we wait, the more at risk we are that we're even going to get the final approval from IEP A, which then means that we're, because we're still going to be obligated to making payments, we may have to go out on the market and issue bonds, which would cost us more money than if we were to get the loan from the IEP A. That's our concern.
And interest rates, I think we all know are only going higher from here, so thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I was going to bring up the parliamentary point about deferrals. I left my...
Oops, sorry.
Thank you for that clarification on what we do when there's a deferral motion on the floor.
Well, I thank Councilman Euler for that. And I didn't mean to cut you off, Councilman Grab, it's just a point of order came to my attention. Did you want to speak to the timeline?
No, I just want to be sure if we vote to defer it, that it's not going to derail in any way our effort to proceed with the consent decree.
Maybe if I could ask Director Powers or City Engineer Klopfenstein to come forward and talk about our concerns over the timeline?
Yes, Mr. Manager, thank you. Our concerns are that, again, we have pretty much teed this up to the point of moving forward. I believe there is a window for the application that we are approaching. If not, I believe we'll pass soon if we don't make this application. Again, we don't have the consultant here, but through the pre-work that we've done, we have pretty much opened this window, and it will be closing soon to make application. So I believe this is time-sensitive, possibly even before the next meeting, that we would need to take action on this particular matter.
To answer your question, Councilman Grab?
Yes, and our director has such a nice way about him. It is time-sensitive, council. That's what I heard him say. And so that will unfortunately shape the way I vote on this, even though I always like to oblige one of my fellow counselors.
All right, the motion that we're voting on is to defer. Please cast your ballots. The motion fails with seven noes and three yeses.
Mayor Lee, I move to adopt the ordinance establishing that CSO remediation district, Part A.
They're seconded by Councilman Euler. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We need a motion on Item B, on the resolution setting fees.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Jensen, seconded by, oh, Councilman Grab. Any discussion? Councilman Grab?
No discussion.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I voted yes, because I believe that the City Manager and his staff did an outstanding job. And I went on record before saying that, no, when I was here, started, we started with talking numbers of 215 million to 300 million dollars, and coming back with a hundred and nine million dollars is a great accomplishment. Congratulations on that. I did say that many times in the past. But to my colleague, Ms. Jansen, we had many discussion about this, and this is a great achievement, but we never, ever talked about how we're going to fund this. And that's my problem, is how are we going to fund this? It is a great achievement, going green, I'm a hundred percent behind that, but we never, ever talk about, okay? And if you believe that the bank's not going to give you a loan for fifteen million dollars at 1.4%, we need to do some more reading. But I will definitely be voting no on Part B, because I just don't like having one model in front of us with no discussion whatsoever as how we could possibly find other ways to fund a hundred and nine million dollars in capital improvement and probably fifty million dollars in operation. So thank you very much for the time, but we'll definitely be voting no on Part B. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion passes with nine yays, one nay.
Madam Clerk? Twenty-one dash one-zero-six is a communication from the City Manager and Assistant City Manager with a request to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2021 revised annual budget relating to the general fund in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for the expansion improvement of Peoria Cares Call Management.
Councilmember Grab?
Manager Urick, we have discussed this extensively, and I put out some ideas as to what I wanted addressed at the last business meeting before installation. What plan do we have to inform the public that we're now urging them to call 211 instead of 494 CARE? If this is approved?
The good news is that we'll still be calling 494 CAREs, so they'll still be using the number. Our plan is to work to transfer the number over so that when you call, it will be answered in the 211 center.
Gotcha. The second thing is, we'll continue to get a monthly report as to where we're falling short with service delivery, what the commonalities are for the calls from our constituents to whom we must answer.
That is correct, and we've put together a contract at the request of council that's included in the packet as well.
And perhaps with some of the savings we have here, I said perhaps, we might be able to hire more code enforcement inspectors to help keep our city from looking ramshackled and rundown?
Well, I think that we're certainly looking at where we can, we can put dollars, and I think code enforcement is one area that the city could always use additional resources.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor Lee.
Were you going to make a motion?
Yeah, I would move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second? Councilman Euler, seconded. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I know you and I also talked about this today. Can you just, it's my understanding, based on our discussion, that if we were to do this in-house, you don't think we could do it to provide such, I guess, a good service and the amount of hours?
That's absolutely correct.
At the same cost.
So at the price the contract is laid out, it's twenty-five dollars per hour for us to provide the service for fifty hours a week. And I think that that, for us to provide the service with our current benefit load, which is, you know, roughly about forty percent for non-public safety employees, we couldn't provide that service with our own staff. It would cost us more. We'd likely have to have more than one person to provide that kind of coverage if we were to look at this, and so that's the reason why this is the most cost-effective manner. And one of the strengths of working with AMT on this is that they are operating the 211 center, and so their dispatchers are really skilled at answering calls and talking to residents about what their needs are. And I think that's where this really helps us to provide some additional support that we don't currently have. Currently, right now, the admins in the manager's office are taking the Peoria Cares calls, and so they may not know the answer to a question if somebody says, I've got a problem with my utilities, whereas 211 will certainly have that answer, will be able to answer that call.
Can you kind of quickly just... Can you kind of quickly just explain how it'll work then if somebody calls, and do they just then send somebody from the city an email, or?
So, so, so they're going to actually get the front end of our, uh, Peoria Care system, so they'll be logging those, those tickets into our system, so then that information will go directly to a department. But there may be a question that somebody has that they don't know the specific answer to, they'll still be able to direct calls to the Community Development Department or the Public Works Department as that need continues to arise. Community Development and Public Works seem to be the two largest departments that get, get the, the lion's share of calls that come in through Peoria Cares.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other discussion? I have to weigh in that, you know, what we have is just currently not working. I had a, a constituent that I just ran into at a retail store, and, you know, she complained about getting voicemail, not getting a live person. You know, people just, I think we have a capacity issue, and we just are not providing the type of service in-house that we need. So we need efficiency, and we need, uh, we need response from, you know, people that can respond to public calls, so. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. No other discussion. Going to ask you to cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
21-120 is a communication from the city manager and interim corporation council with a request to authorize the city council to adopt a resolution that elected official positions meet the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund hourly standard of 1,000 hours per year.
Council Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After we proposed the resolution at the last council meeting, based on multiple discussions with IMRF, it came to our attention that IMRF no longer requires the biannual certification of the 1,000 hours. So, the resolution that was before you from the city asking that you recertify the 1,000 hours is the qualification for an IMRF position for our elected officials, we would simply ask that that be received and filed. There's no action necessary. But I do understand there are multiple questions about IMRF participation, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that there are.
Yeah, let's get a motion on the floor. Okay, move by, uh, to, uh, move to receive and file by Councilwoman Jensen, and second, Councilman Ruck Regal. Discussion, questions? Okay, cast your ballots, please. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We have an unfinished business for township. It's 21-114, a communication from the township supervisor requesting authorization for the town board to adopt a resolution reaffirming that elected official positions meet the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund hourly standard, and I believe we are asking for that to be a receive and file instead.
Council Peterson.
I have spoken with Attorney Redlin Shafer, and although he couldn't be here tonight, he concurred with our opinion that it is no longer required from IMRF, and so on behalf of the township, they would ask that it be received and filed.
Okay, can I get a motion to receive and file? Councilman Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Grab?
Yes. Uh, I do second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Um, we are at, is there any additional unfinished business?
No.
Then we would be at new business.
Is there any new business? Councilman Grab.
Manager, Urich Corporation Council, Peterson. This council directed staff to look into what we could do to make for a more tranquil operation of certain businesses in this community that would appear to be out of control, even though they do not have a liquor license. We have a rather strong handle on those businesses that are malignant in their operation, derelict in the running of the business. We have quite a bit of leverage, maybe not enough sometimes, with those with liquor licenses. Where are we in this process? Because it seems like there's hardly a week that goes by that we don't have, um, some of these businesses being the epicenter of all kinds of problems, not, not just in any particular district, but potentially anywhere in the city.
Council Peterson.
Councilman, we have been looking into what a potential plan of operation ordinance may look like for tobacco license holders, looking somewhat similar to what we have for liquor license holders. We've also been comparing that in the last few days to what a general licensing scheme for filling stations or gasoline stations may look like separate and apart from tobacco licenses, and we believe we'll have some recommendations for you at the next council meeting for discussion.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to, uh, advise our, our new councilors, but you're both young, that, to be very careful about the IMRF pension option. When I came onto the council two years ago, I was advised that I had no opportunity not to participate in IMRF. I had to participate, I was told. I'm already retired, I have, uh, I, my income is fine, and I didn't want, first of all, I was never going to be able to collect because of my age, and secondly, I didn't want to cause the city to have to put money in for me that neither I nor, you know, I wasn't going to benefit from it, but the city doesn't benefit from it either. So if, if it is an option for either of you, and if it's not too late, uh, fine, and, and Mr. Manager, I would make sure that when we have new people coming here, that they're not told what I was told, because now I am told that I cannot get out, even though I asked and I asked and asked and said, "I don't want to participate in this." And I was told, "You absolutely have to." And now we find out I didn't have to. So please make sure, as aged people come on the council, or whatever, that, that that option is clear in our HR department or wherever. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This may be, it's sort of, it may be old business, but I just want to thank the city manager for the quick update he gave us regarding the stimulus money. If you could just explain the status for the public?
Thank you, yes, the federal government finally released the guidance yesterday on the state and local government fiscal relief funds that are coming, uh, there's $350 billion that's allocated to states and local governments throughout the United States. Of that, the City of Peoria's estimate is just a little bit over $47 million. The guidance that was, that was released by the Treasury Department is over 150 pages, made for fun reading last night. I'm still trying to digest some of it, and we will be working to schedule a policy session with the council once we get a little bit more detail. There's a National League of Cities call tomorrow, we're going to be jumping on and, and trying to just digest what all of this means as far as the, the guidance that we'll get from the federal government on how to spend those dollars.
Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to call interim chief, Mr. Thielbold, to the microphone, maybe give us an update on what's going on, some crime lately, all the shootings, and, and I know from my district, in the spring, a lot of people leave their cars and their house unlocked, so there's always a lot of crime this time of the year, so maybe you can get an update in what our police department's doing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Well, I'll start with, I think the trend, what we've been seeing this year, definitely started seeing it last year also, you know, I do speak to other chiefs and other departments our size, and, and similar things are happening in their cities as well, and basically comes down to gun violence, the increase in gun violence related to the shootings, the increases. We definitely had them last year, although our homicide numbers were down, we did see increase of how many people were shot. When our officers responding to these calls, they're engaging and, and actively arresting people that are armed, sometimes in possession of more than one gun, high-capacity magazines, things, those stolen guns. So, it's lately come down to that, and, and it's basically taking all our resources to deal with that situation. Has not interrupted our, our normal calls for service. We still have our officers out there doing those things daily, and as you alluded to, Councilman, you know, summer's upon us, the warmer weather, you, you know, is good, obviously, for any neighborhood to, to remind each other to lock your houses up, lock your cars up, shut your garage doors, so there's not those crimes of opportunity out there. We've, over the past couple of years, seen an increase in some juvenile crime, reference to stolen cars, and, uh, the mobility with, with stolen cars going all over, all over the Tri-County area, and there's been some increases in, in burglaries because of that, in addition to other stolen cars. So, uh, right now, now that we've recognized and tracked and, and tried to, uh, deal with the problems that we normally have, for any city our size, we are definitely extending our folks, um, and, and the resources, uh, in doing everything we can to, to try to slow this down in reference to the issue that we're seeing in almost weekly, sometimes daily, uh, with the violent crime and the shootings. It seems that almost everybody that they encounter is, is having a weapon, and, uh, those interactions are, are sometimes, um, very disturbing to the officers on the street. So, hopefully, you know, we can keep our officers safe and our citizens safe, and we just encourage everyone to, to call, and if they see something, even if it's anonymous with Crime Stoppers, or follow up with a detective, uh, you know, you're going to see these things daily. Unfortunately, we, we've seen them a lot more than we want to, and we, we hope that the neighbors will reach out to us, the residents out there, and, and follow up, even if, even if it's just a phone call, uh, to try to help us with this, because we need the community's help, and, and we have been getting it, but sometimes, you know, we understand that, that, you know, they may not want to talk to us face-to-face out there on the street after one of these incidents occurs, but we certainly encourage them to call us or call Crime Stoppers to help.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for asking that question. Councilman Seer, you know, our current state of affairs requires police-community relations, I mean, working together to solve crime in our city. I think it was just last Friday, I ran into Councilmember Jackson in the city hall, and she had called for a meeting. Was it Wednesday, last Wednesday? She had called for a meeting, she had concerns about what was happening on MacArthur Highway near that Shell gas station there, and there were, you know, there was a lot of loitering, large-scale crowds, loitering, and she was afraid that something may happen, and she had the police chief there and several other adminis, police administrators and city administrators, several community leaders and residents that, that live in the area, just trying to work out solutions and try to work with the property owners. So I thank you for taking that leadership, uh, step, and unfortunately, within days of that action, a homicide took place. So there's a sense of urgency, there's a need for urgent action, there's a need for residents and leaders to work cooperatively with police to address the, the issues of crime that we have in our community. So, thank you, thank you for your service, leadership, both of you. Madam Clerk.
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the council, and I believe we do not have any cards.
Okay.
So then we are at executive session.
Council Peterson.
We have executive session pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C3 to discuss the filling of a vacancy and the position of council member.
With that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Okay, move by Councilwoman Jensen, seconded by Councilman Allen. Please cast your ballots. Thank you for your patience with me today, trying to navigate this, uh, system.
21 minutes is what you were trying to do. Time out. I missed.
What's that? Oh, thanks. Oh, my God. Yeah, I got to get used to it, this, yeah. But thank you.